Restart the Wenham Select Board meeting of 21 February 2023 at
6:50.
6:50. In attendance, Gary Cheeseman.
Diane Bucow.
Peter Quaid.
All the Finance Committee meeting to order for 2:21 at 6:50. Roll call vote, please. Jim Purdy.
Deirdre Paraty.
Dot Schomberger.
Jeff Carter. Thank you. Thank you, FinCom.
Public input.
All right.
Trudy has her hand up.
Do we see them when they're talking instead of this?
All right, let's move on to a public input then. Joe, any hands up? All right. So if you'll let Trudy in to speak, Joe.
All set to go?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. Trudy Reed, 53, Topsfield Road. And watching your meeting of February 7th regarding the change of hours for Town Hall, I'm curious on how for the individuals who are hired at 40 weeks, 40 hours a week, how their hours would be made up. You've changed the hours of Town Hall to be open at 8:00 a.m. Many of these individuals were already coming in at 8:00 and working till 4:30. So where would their extra hours be made up? Because at the moment, it appears these individuals who are hired at 40 hours will be working less but getting the same pay. I'm also curious how this decision impacts the staff at the COA as well as the police, fire, and DPW. Thank you. The second comment I have, looking through your meeting packet for tonight, I know it's not the official ballot, but the spreadsheet for your candidates who's pulled papers on the ballot, it should be Select Board, not Board of Selectmen. And currently, Patrick Waddell's name, his first name is spelled wrong. So I just wanted to point those out so that it wasn't taken from that spreadsheet onto the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Trudy. We'll take that and get an email or answer up on the website.
About the Town Hall hours?
Yes.
Okay. Yep.
Anyone else, Joe? All right. Then on to announcements briefly as we make up a little time.
Speed talk.
So just real brief, I just wanted to bring up the new ethics process. So the State Ethics Commission has a new process this year. And I just want to, we've been sharing information out internally and through the email. If you haven't gotten any, the department's heads have to participate. And we also have to include any vendors that you may have, like snowplow drivers, attorneys, consultants, things like that. Board chairs should have also received an email and should be disseminating the information in the email to your committee and board members. We're going to continue to push this out. But if you have any questions or you're hearing about this for the first time and haven't received an email, feel free to contact myself or Michelle up in the Select Board's office. And we can forward you the information the Town Clerk's office has been circulating.
Thank you. And just what may have been missed prior. So for the master plan, there are the meeting in the boxes going on Wednesday and Thursdays. And some other times, we have the survey up on the website and also the mapping exercise, which is very good. You can pinpoint where you want to make a comment on. Let's move on to, if you haven't got your census forms in, please do so. And Town Meeting's on the 1st of April. And we're up to Town Administrator's Report.
That's what I just did out of turn. Sorry.
All right.
Oh, that was a turn.
That's out of turn, all right.
Yeah.
Then Chair's Report will move through. Diane, you have anything else for announcements or Select Board members?
I just wanted to update you guys. I went to the Veterans Committee in February. Sorry. Took it back. And they're doing great. But they are working on a maintenance plan to give to the DPW to take care of our monuments. But they haven't gotten that done yet. And they're starting to talk about the Memorial Day plans. Parade, no parade, who's going to speak, et cetera, et cetera. But they're going to finalize that in March.
All right.
Thank you.
Good, Diane. Peter? Then correspondence, I think, is yours, Steve?
Yep, we just wanted to bring up, I know Diane had reached out to Salem News. I didn't know if you wanted to just update on some of your thoughts about getting Wenham a little more coverage.
Yeah, a little more coverage, a little bit different types of communication. And I really feel strongly about, you know, newspapers and press being an honest way to, honest and true way to get information out. So I did reach out to Salem News. I think a lot of people get that paper in Wenham. They didn't respond, but I'm going to try again. But on that same note, I also reached out to Michelle. And we're throwing stuff up on the HW Cam just announcement-wise and working on the website to update it. And then amazing social media, I think we've been doing some great stuff. Joe's been doing some great stuff. And Kate put up some great master plan ones this past week with Little Family Feud. That was good.
So on the social media, we're trying to have a news item every day?
Yeah, we're trying. We're trying, at least for the next month or two. We're trying to get a larger presence on social media. And from, you know, what we've read, the more you post, the more followers you get. So we're trying to do one to two items per day over the next six to eight weeks. And we've already seen a pretty big uptick in followers and, you know, people interacting with our posts. So I think hopefully that once we build our following, it'll be, you know, work out as a better outlet for us, or another outlet, but also more effective as it stands right now to push out information.
So what platforms are we on?
We're on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram.
And we are the Town of Wenham and all of them?
Yes.
The Town of Wenham. Yep. So people could follow that and then be updated with stuff.
And the Hamilton Wenham Athletic Facility, so that's just that the Select Board's Office received probably between 50 and 75 emails from Wenham residents that had, you know, very strong interest in seeing the Fields, Athletic Fields Project move forward, specifically get the funding from the CPC. And if you were following along last week on Thursday night, you would have saw that the CPC did vote to fund $400,000 towards the Fields Project. So that email campaign did appear to be successful.
Great.
Diane, you want to make the consent agenda motion?
No.
No.
Pete wants to.
Peter, sorry. Peter.
I'd be happy to, but.
Motion.
Where is that?
Right there.
Oh, I move to approve the open session minutes dated 1/24/2023. And I move to approve and hold the executive session minutes dated January 24, 2023.
I second that.
Any discussion? Otherwise, roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Consent is done. We're getting towards the meat of the meeting pretty soon here. All right. So first item of business is Chief Kavanaugh on, Joe?
I am on.
All right. So you want to introduce our new Fire Department Chaplain?
Yes, he is actually on the meeting tonight. So I would like to introduce Sean Bendigo. I would like to have him appointed as our new Chaplain. We've been without one for two years since Michael Duda left. And if Sean would like to say a few words, that would be great.
Yeah, just it would be an honor to be the Fire Chaplain. I spent 17 years in the Fire Service and Volunteer Fire Department in Madison, New Hampshire, and seven years as a Fire Chief. So I know what it's like. And I really, it'd be an honor to support the Fire Department and support the men and women, first responders, any way I can and offer that support. So it'd be a privilege.
Thank you.
Very well. Diane, you want to make the motion?
Yes, definitely. I move to that the Wenham Select Board appoint Sean Bendigo to the position of Chaplain for the Fire Department effective today, February 21st, 2023, through June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Anything further?
No.
Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Here, yes. And welcome, Sean, to the Wenham Fire Department. Certainly appreciate your volunteering there. And it's nice to have a chaplain that's also a firefighter.
Thank you, Sean.
My privilege. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
We are. It's good. We're still good. We're good. We can come. Slow down.
All right. Item B will pass over as we still do not have an official letter resignation. But it really doesn't matter as a practical setup for the meetings as the current, currently have their associate members. So they just fill the slots as a vacancy rather than a resignation. So hopefully, the next meeting or two, we'll have that resolved. All right, Jim, welcome this evening to the joint meeting with the Select Board. And just for the public, so we'll be going over mostly the articles. Steve will give us a backdrop on some moving parts still in the budget. And then we'll let the FinCom, if they have a couple of motions that they want to move and make their recommendations, we'll do so. And then you'll close out. And then the Select Board will continue on with other business. So first one, Steve, do we have the results of the CPA?
Yep, bringing it up right now to share.
It says participants can see it, but I don't know why we can't see it on screen. Can you see that? It's sitting there.
Did you see the email? So you want to just read off there? All right, Steve will read.
All right. So we're just, so moving forward. So basically, the email that you see here is from Harriet Davis. There's the chairwoman of the CPC. And so the CPC on Thursday night voted to fund Town Hall debt, $98,430.23 from the Historic Resource Reserve and $14,294.77 from the Budgetary Reserve. For the Affordable Housing Trust, they awarded $600,000 from that. They funded $187,512.52 from the Community Housing Reserve and $412,487.48 from the Budgetary Reserve. The Maple Woods was awarded $150,000. This was funded from the CPA Fund balance. West Wenham Park, they funded that at $375,500. That came from the CPA Fund balance. West Wenham Park received $87,225. Excuse me, Wenham Museum, also from the CPA Fund balance. Hamilton Wenham Regional Schools for the Fields, $400,000, also from the CPA Fund balance. That totaled $1.724,950 million, plus $8,500 for admin support, which essentially draws down Historic Resources down to zero. Historic Resource, Community Housing, and Budgetary Reserves, leaving an open space in Recreation untouched.
Thank you, Steve. So Jim, I'll turn it over to you if your board members want to discuss this. And if you want, come to a recommendation for the.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. So Finance Committee, we have seen this before, but this clarifies the money by dollars, by appropriation, by article. Do you have any comments or questions on this?
I have a comment, just a comment of clarification. Just to be sure I'm correct on this. So the $375,000 for the West Wenham Park will replace Article 16 of the debt exclusion to fund the West Wenham Park renovation. Is that clear?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the memorandum from Harriet Davis as Chair outlining the appropriations and the grants as noted?
Jim, could I say something?
Of course, Harriet. What would you like to say?
All I wanted to say is, in several places, we put in some restrictions, specifically on the Hamilton Wenham Regional Schools. We wanted them to go for items of accessibility, for tennis courts and whatnot. The exact wording is in our minutes of that meeting. And I think otherwise, we have a little restriction on the Affordable Housing Trust. Otherwise, and also, I want to point out that the $8,500 for admin costs has not yet been voted. But we have a meeting scheduled on Thursday night. And that will be the primary matter to be brought forward.
Thanks, Harriet. Have those restrictions been communicated, for example, to the schools, for example, Harriet?
Well, they were in the public meeting.
Okay.
So I don't know, I don't think we've ever done that before, put in restrictions. I'm sure KP will have an opinion on that. But there was a fair amount of discussion. And if you probably know, over the years, there's been a question of turf fields. And points were made that the NFL and various other organizations aren't using turf fields. So the main thing was that the CPC wanted to make certain that that particular part of the program was not funded by CPA. There were plenty of other aspects to the Athletic Field Project so that the $400,000 can go for.
I'm sure there is. Thank you, Harriet.
Okay, you're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from the Finance Committee? Hearing none. I will move to accept the funds from the CPC. And the amount of, what's the total amount here? I don't have it on my notes.
$1,724, right, $1 million?
Yeah, $1 million.
$724,950.
Dollars.
Dollars.
Plus.
Plus the $8,500.
Hundred.
Plus the $8,500 that will be voted on by the CPC in the next two days.
Correct.
Thank you, Harriet. Motion's made. Is it seconded?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Scott. Any further discussion by the Finance Committee on the CPC grants to the Town of Wenham? Hearing none on Finance Committee. A roll call vote. Hi, Jim.
Hi, Deirdre.
Hi, Scott.
Hi, Jeff.
Thank you very much, Finance. Thank you, Harriet.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Jim. Then we ready to move on to item D, the capital plan?
Yep.
Yep.
All right. So Steve will give us a overview of the current iteration of the capital plan.
Yep. So Finance Committee at home, if you want to pull up the packet I sent out shortly before this meeting, you'll see the draft warrant for the annual Town Meeting.
The draft warrant or the CPC IP?
Go after E. After item E.
After E. I need help today. While we're looking for item E, Jim, can you restate that motion? I didn't quite understand it on the CPC funds.
Who's that?
It's Diane Bucow, just asking for a restatement of that motion because I wasn't clear on it.
Well, can Catherine read it back, please?
So I think you just meant you wanted to take a motion to recommend acceptable or favorable action on the CPC.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
On the CPC project.
Yes, exactly. Yep.
Thank you.
And we had, it was made Diane and seconded and voted on unanimously by the four FinCom members present.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Steve with the capital plan?
Yep. So we can just, just for context for everyone, if we can back up a little bit. So coming out of last week's meeting, both Select Board and the Finance Committee, the intent was to try to utilize $250,000 out of free cash to essentially match funds on Hamilton's side for their patent homestead they had dedicated when they sold a piece of land about 10, 12 years ago. They had dedicated a $500,000 into a reserve fund that could only be released if Wenham matched the traditional 2/3, 1/3 split, making our portion $250,000. As the last week unfolded and looking at the police union negotiations had settled, and we were able to incorporate that into our operating budget. And then based on, you know, current expenditure projections for this year, looking at our free cash estimates moving into the future years, which you can see with the updated forecast that's also in your packet, and showing that, you know, reducing our free cash estimate from $1 million next year to $750,000. And if also, if you look, I brought back from our November 10th, I believe, was our finance, our budget process kickoff meeting where we did the overview at night. I also inserted that into your deck just to view that historically Wenham comes out of Town Meeting with roughly between $4,000 and $6,000 of free cash net of appropriation.
$400,000 or $600,000.
Four to $400,000 to $600,000 net of appropriation. And if you add that with the roughly $550,000 in stabilization funds, you get roughly about a million bucks, which is 5% of total expenditures year over year. And so once you change that, once you change the projections by, we would, in using the $250,000 in free cash, you're essentially drawing our free cash balance down to almost zero, which means that you're relying on full, relying on regeneration of free cash and not the starting fund balance, which is, you know, essentially about a 50% contributor to your total free cash balance. So with that said, a long way of saying I'm recommending that we don't fund the $250,000 with free cash and move that into our debt exclusion proposal that will be going for the Fields Project because it's a large project. And I don't think it's worth essentially draining the town savings to, you know, pay down a large project by such a small amount, right? So you wouldn't want to drain your savings to, you know, to buy something that you could borrow for. You kind of want to save that just for what it is. It's a, you know, a reserve fund for, you know, for a disaster in the future if one was to come up. And with that, I am proposing, if you look at Article 5 on the use of free cash to fund fiscal year 2024 capital improvement programs. If you remember, last week, we had talked about having a debt exclusion amount of roughly about $550,000. And now with the CPC coming up with the $255,500, which was the request for the West Wenham Park that was going to show up as a standalone debt exclusion article, we're proposing to remove that article now that it is being paid through other funds and move the remaining $38,000 in capital items for the building envelope for exterior walls and downspouts for the police, which is $25,000 into the free cash. Moving the COA front door replacement tree, which is $3,542, out of debt exclusion and into free cash. And moving the police station bathroom for $10,000 out of debt exclusion into free cash. So that essentially reduces the total debt exclusion ask to the two projects of the library HVAC and the fire station roof, equalling $200,000. And it increases the use of free cash by those three projects by $38,000 to $445,156. So with that said, it would be the same capital improvement program voted on by the Finance Committee last week, plus those three projects as outlined in your packet, Article Number 5. So with this, I would be looking for any discussion from the Select Board and FinCom. And if none, an amendment to your recommendation to change that dollar amount.
What's the borrowing amount again, Steve?
$200,000.
So Gary here, I think what we have is a bit of a balancing act. So with the $250,000 picked up by CPC funds, we can now slip a little bit of the debt exclusion over to free cash, but still maintain a buffer zone there so long as we use the two big items, the library HVAC and the fire station roof totaling together $200,000 as a debt exclusion item. So in summary.
Fire station roof.
Yeah. So in summary, we're moving three small items out of debt exclusion over to free cash. That we are still considering the $250 matched with Hamilton Patent Park, but that'll be under discussion Thursday in the five chairs meeting as to how we're going to align the $15 million request. And that brings down our debt exclusion to $200,000.
Yep.
And I think, you know, that knowing that our overall debt position is improving as we pay that down, we still need to make use of those resources borrowing-wise. So I think this is a rational place to put the debt at $200,000 or two important things. Diane, questions?
No. So we're almost using the same amount of free cash just for different things because what we were going to spend it on is covered by, what, that $250 is already taken over by CPC. So we just took things out of borrowing to use the free cash that we were going to use anyway.
A little bit less free cash.
A little bit less. A little bit less. But it's saving us on the debt so that we could get some capital funds, still capital improvements made.
Yes.
Yep. Sounds like a good idea. Yeah. Thank you, CPC.
I think it's smart.
So over to you, Jim, then, in your committee.
Okay. Any questions from the Finance Committee on this shift in borrowing and free cash? Borrowing $200,000, free cash at $445,156. I have a question. Steve, you mentioned, should we be discussing the field reserve matching fields under Article 10?
Well, I think that's going to be a separate discussion at five chairs on Thursday. So what we're looking at right now is your expedition, if your committee wants to make it, as to using the free cash under Article 5.
Okay. Well, I'll hold my questions then on the field reserve fund and the agreements, or lack of agreements with the Hamilton side until... But we have to discuss it under Article 10, right?
Yes.
Okay. We'll discuss it there then. But didn't you say?
Yeah, I don't have any questions on Article 5. This is Jeff. As Diane said, it makes sense. It's a good shifting of funding. And again, thank you, CPC.
And then I draw your attention to Article 13, which is the other side of that. It would be debt exclusion ones if you just want to see the chart in front of you.
So Article 5 was just the free cash. Article, the new Article 13 is the debt exclusion for the capital improvements. And then Article 14 was going to be the debt exclusion for the Fields. And then Article 14 was going to be the debt exclusion for the fields, which we are going, with, used to be Article 10, which we're going to hold on so that we can hear from the school and the five chairs, and then we'll get a number on that.
So Jim, does your committee want to move ahead with your recommendation on Article 5?
Just a minute, please.
So what is the percentage now of free cash that's being used? It looks like it's crossed out in the commentary.
What? What article?
Yes, under Article 5. Down, the blue numbers below.
It's about 40.
These old numbers, you want to look at the grand total in the chart.
Right now, we're estimating at about 44%.
44? Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on the shifts in use of free cash and borrowing? Hearing none. I move that the Finance Committee take favorable action on the capital plan as presented by Steve with borrowing now set at $200,000 and the use of free cash as outlined, 445,156. Here a second.
Seconded.
Thank you, Scott. Any further comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none, a roll call vote. Hi, Jim.
Hi, Deirdre.
Hi, Scott.
Hi, Jeff.
Thank you. It passes unanimously. Thanks, thank you very much, Jim. Good.
Steve, why don't you go ahead with the overall budget with the changes?
Yeah, so Article 6, 4. Yeah, Article 4, the new Article 4 is the annual operating budget appropriation, town and schools. So as I mentioned earlier, that the police, we have come to an agreement. We, I mean, it has not been ratified yet, but we feel confident that it will move forward. And the cleanest way to handle that from a financial perspective is to move it into the operating budget. So that is what I am proposing. It would need an amendment from the Finance Committee for both the police and the town hall budget. And the reason for that is, if you remember, we were holding a salary reserve in town hall that was earmarked for library and police. So now that that's settled, we're proposing to reduce the $46,000 to $20,000. The $20,000 will still exist for library funding. And the police budget now is reflective of what would be in year one of the contract. And something I want to mention is that we worked really hard this year to essentially redraft the compensation piece in the police contract. It was all verbal outlining how the compensation would be essentially calculated from a base rate to stipends, and it was extremely confusing. So both sides highlighted some issues where there were some errors in calculations and the need to come up with a streamlined approach that everybody can be on the same page with, same page on. So with that being said, the increase that you see is reflective of what the joint parties came to the agreement on as to what the starting base pay would be based on the contract wording, not necessarily what the practice was, and also an increase in cost of living and affected overtime and stipends. And the other reason I want to point this out is that the free cash estimates were reduced next year in part because if you look at any of our prior audits, you'll see that the police salary is a large contributor to free cash generation in that it typically comes in less than budgeted. And so now, when you're seeing the increase of 4.7% on the budget summary, you are essentially seeing that is what likely will be the actual next year, bringing it in. So you have, you'll have a decrease in what was excess funds in prior years. The updated salary sheets will essentially eat into that and also increase the budget proportionally to the cost of the bargained items. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of them for the Finance Committee or Select Board.
Any questions from the Select Board? Over to you then, Jim.
Well, I'll be quite frank, it's the first time I've looked at these revised numbers. I just copied them just before the meeting. So I'm having a little bit of a challenge personally, maybe the rest of the folks are not. So that, Steve, the new operating budget inclusive of the schools is 23079217, is that correct?
Yeah, so I mean, I can go a little bit more granular into the police, so...
Well, I just want to understand the difference here. So it was 23106508, and it's now 23083 with the police amendments, is that correct?
That's correct. In addition to that, so it's town hall change.
Town hall.
Town hall reduction of 28,000. Police increase of about 60,000. And then we have also updated the debt exclusion to our most current, our most recent projections from Hilltop Securities. The new debt exclusion amount is 468,907. That's down almost 17% from last year, which was 563,553.
I'm not following that, but I...
Well, if you go, Jim, if you go to the town of Wenham FY24 overview in your packet, the very first page.
Yep.
See that? So if you look at revenue projections...
Yep.
You go down to total levy limit.
Yep.
Right below that, you'll see debt exclusion.
Mm-hmm, yep.
So debt exclusion has an offsetting entry. It's revenues equal...
Of 94,000.
And you'll see the reduction of 94,000 or 16.8%. So what's that is, is that you have, we have long-term projects that are rolling off, so the debt service is reducing over time. And also in your packet, you'll see a PowerPoint slide that shows our debt curve, and you can kind of use your finger and point to FY23, and you'll see the reduction, the reduction there. So that, really, that's a, you know, that's a savings on the tax bill, because that's money that would have been raised outside of the proposition two and a half levy limit that's tied to debt, debt for specific projects. And as that reduces, the debt exclusion for that project is expired, that moves off of the tax rate.
Okay. Got it.
And then, again, would you want some more information?
No, I'll go back to the Finance Committee. Questions? So we are making a recommendation on the total annual operating budget appropriation, town and schools together, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So the amendment total, based on that, would be... It's a...
23079?
Yep, 23079217.
Okay. Okay, FinCom, any further questions or comments on the recommendation on the annual operating budget for both the town and the schools? I'll make a motion. The motion is the Finance Committee will take favorable action on the annual operating budget appropriation for the town and the schools in the amount of $23,079,217 for FY24. Here a second.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Scott. Any further questions from the Finance Committee folks? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as made? Hi, Jim.
Hi, Deirdre.
Hi, Scott.
Hi, Jeff.
Okay, thank you very much, FinCom. Where are we going to from here, Steve?
All right, the next, I'd like to draw your attention to the new Article 7, which is Article to Fund Collective Bargaining Agreements.
Okay.
This is something that the Finance Committee, we discussed but did not vote on on Wednesday, and I would hope to get a recommendation tonight. Essentially, what this article does is, we're hopeful that library will settle before town meeting, but police, fire, and DPW have all effectively settled. So this article is accepting, you know, accepting the terms of the agreement and acknowledging that, and giving permission to fund them either through this article or through Article 6, Article 4, excuse me, which is the budget article. So that would be that. It's the first year of every contract the town meeting needs to essentially give permission to enter into the contract.
So Article 7, how does that differ from the 445,000 that we just voted on, Steve?
There's no dollar amount on Article 7.
I see.
This is just the allowance to fund through either this article or other sums of money, which the other sums would be the Article 4, the operating budget.
I have Articles, I'm confused again. I have Article 4, adoption of 5 CL to double property tax exemptions. Which one are you referencing now, Steve?
Annual operating budget appropriation, town and...
Article 6?
Yep.
Okay.
So those, the, those articles are, those, excuse me, those contracts listed are incorporated in the budgets that have been discussed and voted on, and they have been bargained in good faith by the Select Board.
But all we're doing here basically is this article goes to town meeting to essentially ratify the individual contracts and agreements.
Yep, that's right, right, gives a...
It's not a spending article.
Right. General law, Chapter 150 requires that the town allow the funding of these bargaining agreements between the town. It's essentially entering into a new three-year contract.
And no appropriation or dollar amounts are attached to the warrant articles, is that correct?
That's correct.
And if we're asked how much that might be, and where do we get it out of free cash, what would be the response to that, Steve? How much in free cash do we have for that?
Zero.
It's this week, it's already funded out of the operating budget.
Yeah, it's already in the, all these are already in the operating budget.
They're already in operating, okay, thank you.
It's more legally allowing the town to enter to these agreements and fund them through the budget process.
Okay.
Steve, I thought you said, though, that not all of the contract negotiations have concluded.
Well, the library is outstanding. That's correct. But we're hopeful that it will be done by the, by town meeting.
Is this a finance article that we need to vote on?
Yes.
Yes, I believe so, as you're recommending that the town meeting body approve the collective bargaining agreements.
Yeah, I mean, we could also have a recommendation at town meeting, like where the library is the, kind of the one left, one item that's left open. I can understand your point.
Okay, any other discussion by Finance?
Yeah, Steve, this is Jeff again. What is the result if, when the negotiations of the library conclude that the increase in salaries is not, is in excess of the salary reserve that's left after the police negotiations?
It would have to be raised likely through a small contribution of free cash. But I can say with confidence that that's highly unlikely.
Thank you.
Okay. So this is Article 7, use of free cash to fund the fiscal year, acceptance of the contract negotiations with police, fire, and library, correct?
It's correct. DPW.
DPW, okay. That will be a motion to act favorably on the motion that I just, on the article that I just discussed and made. Here a second. Scott, is that you, Scott?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Made and seconded, any other further discussion on the article? Hearing none, all those in favor? Hi, Jim.
Hi, Deirdre.
Hi, Scott.
Jeff.
Okay. On we go.
So the only two outstanding items on the article, on the warrant that would need FinCom's input, and we've mentioned this earlier, and will be discussed at the all-chairs meeting on Thursday, is the borrowing approval for the school fields and then the removal of matching, the matching Hamilton's field reserve fund to be funded with free cash, which I believe we've come to a consensus tonight that free cash would be better utilized funding the capital improvement, capital improvement plan as presented.
So Jim, you said earlier that you wanted to make some comments on the funding of the school athletic field project and/or the use of money against the Hamilton...
Maybe other FinCom members have questions as well. I'll let the members throw out any questions or comments that they have before I comment.
I have a comment question on the matching. It's still, it's just unclear to me why we're doing that at all. It seems like we're doing it because Hamilton had extra money, and they decided to put it towards this purpose, which is great. I don't understand why we then are necessitated to put funds in just because they said so. I mean, if we didn't put the funds in, either they still put their funds in, or they don't, and the overall cost of the project goes down by the combined amount of those two. So just why are we doing this?
Yep, and that's, that's exactly right, and that's what we're going to talk about and sit with the five chairs, basically just to explain that it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a good financial move for Wenham to do just what you're saying, to match those funds in that if Hamilton has a certain pot of money, then good, good for them. But in, so at the end of the day, if the project costs $15 million total, and we split it up based on the assessment rates for the regional school district, set by the regional school district agreement, then, you know, we should be responsible for picking up our tab, one-third roughly, and they should be responsible for picking up for their tab, two-thirds. How they fund that or how we fund it shouldn't matter, right? So at the end of the day, we got to pick up a third, they got to pick up two-thirds. So at the end of the day, we gotta pick up a third, they gotta pick up two-thirds, and we have our part of money and they have their part of money. And, you know, it, it, all this moving around of cash and, and, um, you know, kind of piecemealing it together, it just doesn't really make sense.
Thanks, Steve.
So you, you just, uh, were suggesting, Steve, that we wouldn't be using, we wouldn't be using free cash either way, uh, what, however this article kind of turns out to, to, to be, to be, uh, the results of it, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, that would, that would be my suggestion. I just think that, you know, looking at, looking at the projections to draw down your, essentially your type of appropriation, which is your next year's starting fund balance, uh, would put us in a precarious, uh, situation coming into FY '25. Uh, you know, likely, maybe reducing the amount we'd be able to, uh, appropriate for capital improvement, or, you know, God forbid, an emergency comes up and that's kind of your rolling, that $500,000, four, $500,000 in net of appropriation, the way we're set up is kind of our rolling reserve fund for emergencies and spending that town. I just, I'm not sure that's a good idea.
Gary here, so certainly, you know, the, uh, we need to keep that buffer in the free cash, and if you look at it, I mean, this 250 contribution ends up being less than 2% of the, uh, project cost, so it's really not gonna make any dent whatsoever on the project cost, and it'll be, uh, fully funded, and we'll pick up our share of the debt cost, and Hamilton pick up their share of the debt cost on, you know, the one to two ratio, and, uh, each town will, I think, should proceed forward in the manner that suits its best.
Gary, you just said one to two, you mean one to three?
No, it's one to two. One part Wenham, two parts Hamilton, one-third, two-thirds.
Doesn't the school put money in? The school has to put money in too, right? The school has to put money in?
No, the school, that's, the school will borrow the total sum.
Oh, okay.
We'll be paying one-third, Hamilton paid two-thirds of the debt service and the principal.
Okay.
So what, what you were suggesting, Gary, just for the Finance Committee members, so, uh, they haven't been part of this discussion, is that potentially on Thursday, we're going to suggest that this, uh, matching piece get in, incorporated and bundled, if you will, into the total debt service? Is that another way of saying it?
I think what we're saying is each town will look at what is best for the town as far as how we're gonna pay the debt service and the principal for the $15 million project. So if Hamilton must have used that $500,000 or from other source, likewise, we'll, uh, it looks like free cash is not the best way for us to go, but we'll find other methods to, uh, fund that, uh, debt service.
And the other question that'll come up on Thursday, if I understand this correctly, is that $15 million article is up for discussion?
Yes, I believe so, because right now, you know, as a result of the two CPC meetings, there is $1.2 million that has been raised, and the school budget itself in the school stabilization fund includes $1.698 million. So a lot of the money is already there, and we do hear from, uh, third sources that the private fundraising is, uh, starting to pick up as well.
So potentially, Gary, at the Thursday meeting, this is all projected or potential, that that $15 million SEP debt exclusion amount may change?
Yeah, yeah, we're, right. So I think we're just looking for, you know, the article to be a little more specific in, you know, how much, how much they anticipate borrowing and how much is gonna be coming from other sources. So if you have a $15 million total project and you have $5 million coming from other sources, then, you know, the thought is that, you know, maybe it shouldn't, uh, the authority to borrow 15, um, you know, shouldn't be there, maybe the authority to borrow 10 should be the article, and, uh, you know, the five, uh, the $5 million coming from other sources, and where that gets a little bit confusing, just so people are aware, because it's, it seems, um, you know, like common sense is that their bond counsel and their counsel by their, the, uh, school committee, I mean, the school committee, uh, for the regional school district is, believes that they have to have the authority to borrow for the whole project, regardless if they have other funding sources for it, and their intention is not to borrow for the full 15, so we're, you know, sitting councils are involved, bond councils involved, so you have, you know, four, five lawyers in a room with, you know, with the opinions, and we're coming up with, with a, uh, a warrant article that, you know, kind of meets everybody's needs and that the communities are comfortable with, and the schools can get their project done. And so that's why, just some moving parts that it's not wrapped up quite yet.
Thank, thank you, Steve, for that explanation. So this will all happening at a, a so-called chairs meeting, FinCom, um, with, uh, the two Select Boards, the two Finance Committee, uh, School Committee, and, uh, Senior Administrators from the two communities on Thursday morning. That's at 10 o'clock, right, Steve?
I believe so, I don't, I don't have my calendar in front of me, but that's-
Yeah, I think, okay. And it's a, a kind of a hybrid meeting of in-person and Zoom, is that, is that correct?
That's correct. We'll be hosting it here, we'll be doing it hybrid, so, you know, if Wenham Representation wants to come here and, uh, be in-person, that's fine, or if you'd rather participate from home, that, that option will be available to everybody in the meeting.
Yeah. I think I'll be at, I'll be at Town Hall in person, and I know I talked with, uh, Scott as the liaison to the schools, uh, and Scott, I think you mentioned to me that you might be able to make it, um, uh, by phone, is that, is that correct?
As long as I can Zoom or dial in, whatever is most convenient.
Okay. So we don't need to do, and we don't need to take any action on this, on this, at this point?
Yeah, there's no action to take right now.
Okay, thank you.
So Steve, you want to speak to Stabilization Fund?
Yeah, so with the, also the article, I know if FinCom had, would discuss this, is, and it recommended the $50,000, the stabilization, we originally, before the reduction in, uh, the free cash forecast, was gonna try to fund it at $100,000, instead it's $50,000, um, you know, kind of with the intention of doing something similar to what Wenham does with their OPED contribution, that's, uh, other post-employment benefits for the retirees, so we currently fund that, I believe, at 90. We're gonna, we're funding that at $90,000 this year with the financial policy to increase it by $10,000 each year, so it's been, it was 80 last year, 70 the year before, and now it'll be 100 next year, and we'll do something similar with the stabilization fund. And for all that listening, just so you're aware, the stabilization fund is very much like free cash in that it's available for appropriation at town meeting. It needs, uh, it, it needs a three, three-fourths vote to, to free up the money and appropriate it, so it's, it's, uh, seen by the creditors as being a more secure reserve fund and not as easily utilized as free cash, but it does count towards your undesignated fund balance, which would be free cash net of appropriation plus reserves, that's also on the slide in your packet, and that is the balance that we're trying to get up in the, um, 6% to 7% of, uh, operating expenditures. So really, it's kind of a one-for-one trade-off, $1 out of free cash into $1 into reserve, you're still working towards that same end goal.
Select Board, any-
And there's no, there's no specific appropriation attached to this article, is that right? It's just, it'll sit there in case of, of need and emergency?
Yep, yeah, it's right, it's just moving it into a more secure savings account.
Right, right. Do we need to take a vote on this, Steve, uh, by Finance?
I believe you already voted, you can take a vote, but I believe that you guys already voted on this, uh, recommended at, at your Wednesday meeting, but, um, you can take another vote just to make, just to make sure.
I'm looking at the minutes from the meeting here. Uh, property, debt exclusion, roadwork, transfers, cemetery. Article to be determined, cash and the amount of fee fund to fund stabilization with $50,000. Okay, and we voted on that the other day.
That was my understanding.
Finance and Advisory Committee voted unanimously by roll call to recommend favorable action on Article, doesn't have a number here, but, uh, Article to be determined on the use of free cash. We have voted on this at our last, uh, meeting. Yep.
Okay, perfect.
All right, so Steve, any other article items?
That is it.
All right, so, uh, Jim, anything else from the Finance Committee?
Uh, let me ask, any other questions, comments, or observations from the Finance Committee on the articles that we reviewed this evening?
Yeah, I have one, Jim, this is Jeff.
Jeff, yep.
Yeah, regarding Article 14, maybe this is a question for the five chairs to put to the School Committee, but, you know, my question is, are there any plans for the, uh, school, the School Committee to, uh, present the projects and the merits of it and the request for funding, uh, to the Finance Committee?
So that's, uh, that would, Jim, as the chairman there, you can request that, the, I know there's a large binder sent from the schools to the CPC, and also the Select Board received the general briefing on the project itself back in October from the Independent Committee.
Well, I think it's a good point, Jeff. The Finance Committee has not had a, a briefing in and of itself. There's material out there certainly on, on the, on the, uh, on the, uh, plans and the costs and so on.
Sure, but, yeah, we've had department heads coming to, uh, present $40,000 budgets, make themselves, uh, available for a presentation and questions. We might have misses $15 million without the same, uh, benefit, which, uh, this could be a challenge.
Yep, yep. We can certainly, uh, we can certainly schedule a meeting and have, uh, Superintendent Tracy and/or folks from the, uh, from that committee, uh, give us a, give us an overview. I think it's a reasonable, uh, a reasonable question, Jeff, a reasonable suggestion. Well, maybe, Steve, we could, you could help in scheduling that, or, and we could come up with a time?
Yep, yeah, no problem, and I can, I can, uh, put together the, any information that's been distributed to the Select Board, uh, and get that out to the Finance Committee too, and, um, we'll get something set up as far as the presentation.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other business to come before, uh, the Finance Committee, uh, this evening?
I would just note that the Superintendent and the School Committee appears to be doing a public information session on Saturday, March 11th, about the athletic field project, so that may be worthwhile for us to view that first and then invite the Superintendent for specific questions, rather than to repeat the presentation.
Thank you, Deirdre, I actually have that on my schedule, it's a Saturday morning, right at the high school.
Saturday at 9:00 AM, but they're also, from what I remember, broadcasting it, and I'm sure it will be available on tape as well.
I'm, I'm planning to attend that, uh, myself, and of course Finance Committee members are, but, and maybe following that up, we can, we can have further questions to the, uh, to Superintendent Tracy and, and/or others. Thank you, Deirdre. Any other comments or business to come before the, uh, the FinCom this evening? Hearing none, do I hear a motion, uh, to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Jeff, motion made to adjourn by Jeff, seconded?
Seconded by Scott.
Scott, okay, all those in favor for adjournment, hi, Jim.
Hi, Deirdre.
Hi, Scott.
Hi, Jeff.
Thank you, thank you very much, uh, Gary, Select Board, Steve, appreciate it.
Thank you, Jim, and the Finance Committee. All right, then, then, uh, Select Board continues on, uh, the Item G, so essentially, I think what we have now is FinCom has made their recommendations on everything except for the two questions on the athletic field projects, the $15 million question and the $250,000 question. So-
And the what? Why don't you want a $250? What's the $250 question?
The $250 matching of the $500 from Hamilton.
Oh.
Right, so those are the only two outstanding things that we need from FinCom. On our part, the Select Board, with the deletion of the former one and two about clickers and so forth, that we really have just one non-financial article of our own, plus the citizens petition article. Both are referring to the town clerk, so, uh, two of you want to discuss those tonight or, uh, wait until next Tuesday, when hopefully we'll have the entire finalized budget, final answers on the, uh, borrowing articles, 15 and a quarter million answered. I'll wait.
We haven't voted on any of the other ones.
No, we have not.
So why don't we go through them all, no?
Well, no, no, we, you know, we certainly, discussion, I was just gonna suggest that instead of opening the warrant and reordering them tonight, have any discussion you want today, which will probably be helpful, and then I can have any requests, questions, matching orders, whatever, to gather more information for the next meeting, but then make the official reopening of the warrant next week, and then, because we're gonna have to reorder, there's been some that have been removed and replaced, reordered, uh, there may be some on the, uh, senior exemptions, I know I mentioned earlier to Gary, but it's a recent, um, recent order of events is that there may be a couple extra warrant articles that have to be listed individually as they relates to property tax exemptions for seniors, so that would just further, um, renumber them.
So the, um-
But I think the discussion tonight-
And by next Tuesday, too, we should have some of the final formats from, uh, KP Law.
Yeah, right, all that said, so make the final, any final determination on the, on the final form in numbering next week, and have the, have some discussion tonight, so if you want to go through.
But not to recommendations, just kind of go through them and-
Yeah, go through them, get, does anything missing information, some clarity that I can provide.
Because I think especially on the first three ones, the, the exemptions and so forth, that we really need to see the numbers that are associated with them, as to how far they'll be increased and what the, uh, change in, uh, income and asset caps might be too.
Okay.
So, uh, why don't we go through each of the articles for discussion, and then we'll, uh, next Tuesday, have hopefully most of the final paperwork in place with the correct wording, the exact numbers and terms, and we'll make our recommendation votes then.
Okay.
All right, is that good with you, Peter?
All right, so, um, who's got a good stack of warrant?
I have a pretty good-looking stack here.
I have one.
All right, so-
I'll start.
All right.
Who do you want to start?
Nope, you start.
All right, so we'll do both, the first two, which were article, which, yeah, was Article one and two, uh, to elect the town clerk for assistant town, um, annual town meeting only, that does not need to be a freestanding article, so that will be proposed to be removed. Article two was to adopt electronic voting as a primary voting method for town meeting, which would have been a bylaw adjustment, uh, that, that is going to be removed. The moderator, um, under his authority, will make the determination at town meeting, uh, as needed for the, uh, what, what the voting method will be. And then moving down to Article, the proposed Article one, two, and three, which has to do with, um, property tax relief for, um, uh, elderly persons, blinds, and veterans, we are- We are, there may be some clarifying, there may be some local options that the town of Wenham has been practicing and not officially adopted in the past, which is okay, but so some, basically just some clarifying warrant articles to formally adopt these local options, and also make sure we're maximizing the real estate, real estate discounts, and also looking at the qualifications to qualify for these programs with asset and income restrictions, and doing everything we can to make them especially as high as possible under the law so that more people can qualify for them. So that's saying that we have three articles here, that may be four or five articles, but in the end, all five articles are, you know, working towards the intent of those three articles, which is we may need to have some additional articles to do everything we're trying to do with those three.
As we see under the proposed Article two, I mean, if you just look at that list of clauses that we may have to adopt either by group or individually.
Yep.
We may end up with more articles there, any.
So they're all Chapter 59, right?
Yeah.
So we have a list of everything we've adopted in the past, you got that, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So amongst us here, any questions on the raising the cap on the senior work off participation limit?
It's good.
I think he's right.
All right, Article two, the adoption, increase property tax exemptions. I think we're waiting on the exact numbers for the caps, asset limits.
Yep.
Meaning how much it would cost us?
Well, more of what the law says, how far we can lift them up to.
Yeah, like, for example, the deferral, I don't quote me on this, but I believe is set at around $40,000.
What's that?
Sorry, Roger has the sound back.
All right.
Let's just finish this piece, so I can just follow.
Yeah, so the, so, for example, it's to qualify, you have to make, you know, say you have to make $40,000 or less in gross income a year. You know, an example of that is the under local option, the state allows you to tie that income restriction to the circuit breaker, which I believe is in the mid-60s this year. So that would take somebody who makes, makes more than $40,000, that would like to qualify for the program, that couldn't under the way it exists right now, but can, because they make more than 40 but less than 65.
Okay.
But we have to look at each of those clauses one by one.
Yeah.
All right, so Roger had a question, wants to comment?
Go ahead, Roger. Thank you, good evening, members of the Select Board, and with your permission, Mr. Chair, I was just wondering whether there has been any discussion with KP Law about whether the tax relief articles can be bundled together as a consent agenda, separate and aside from the traditional consent agenda for, for some of the other financial articles?
I think there's, that would be two steps. First step is, we need to define which clauses we need to adopt, and then the second step would answer your question as to whether or not Town Council says those have to be individual votes or can be combined.
Yep.
All right, great.
That's a good idea.
Might we throw that out there?
I have not asked that question yet, and this seems, this seems to be growing. So once we figure out exactly what we need to do, that'll definitely see if, what Council thinks about doing that and make sense.
Excellent, thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Roger. All right, so that's future one, two, and three. Any questions from the Select Board on the operating budget article itself?
Not me.
Nope. Five, we talked about the capital improvement plan, using free cash, are we good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Discussion wise? Anything there, Peter?
No.
All right.
We're probably doing something smart.
All right, six prior year bills, there's just one little one.
All right, so this is there, too, those stabilization funds?
Stabilization fund, we spoke, so that's the.
Put in there somewhere.
$50,000, and I think the stabilization fund right now sits at roughly $540,000. So this is a small increase, but I don't think we've added this in quite a while. So have to take inflation into mind and so forth.
Good idea.
Start stepping this up.
So we just need a number for it.
Yeah, all right, prior year bills, the only thing to note there is needs four-fifth majority, which shouldn't, hopefully not be a problem.
Roger can do it.
Yeah, Roger. All right, any further questions on seven, the collective bargaining funding agreement? All right, next one is cemetery and other trust funds.
Sounds good.
All right, and the next one is the cemetery sale of lots transfer. Any questions, Peter, Diane?
This grouping is usually the, so traditional ones, right?
So we're looking at the cemetery, cemetery lots, the water, the roadwork, all being in the consent agenda, right?
Collective bargaining, too?
No, I think collective bargaining has to be separate.
Collective bargaining was separate.
Yeah.
This is in the wrong spot.
Yeah.
I certainly can ask the question if there's anything else we can add, but I think it's pretty likely that they're going to say no.
Little bit of money to the Water Capital Reserve Fund, any questions on that? That in the future, we need to track as we approach the lifespan of the system as itself. Roadwork, thank you to the state for that money. Any further questions on CPA? Nope, we talked about that. All right. Then, so the debt exclusion for the Westmoreland Park is scratched. The borrowing authorization for the town capital improvements now stands at the forestation roof and the library HVAC for $200,000.
Yep.
All right, the next article, borrowing for the school fields, talked about Thursday, as will be the next one, got questioning about the $250,000. And then, our special act, we worked on that last meeting. And so essentially, as I see it, we end up with the three-way choice. The 15 will be the special act, 16 will be the citizen petition, or a no vote on both. Anything on that, Peter?
Nope.
What would a no vote on both?
Well, there won't be any change.
Oh, right, okay, yeah, so we didn't discuss this, but we discussed putting the special act on, but we didn't do the wording or anything, so this came from KP Law, the wording?
Yep. So one thing the Select Board can think about is, one of the questions is, is.
The overlap period?
Yeah, so, right, the general, as well as KP Law put it, the, the general court may be less likely to require voter approval at an election, so basically that it would not require us to, you know, in order to enact it, to then put a question on a future ballot. Depending on what we hear back from, they do like to see some sort of overlap so that the, essentially the person who has won the election is in the seat, has some, you know, stability, knowing that if it comes through, that they'll remain their position, they become an appointed official as of the date that the act comes through, but they remain appointed for, you know, three months' time, for example.
Section two.
And then at that point, the Select Board has the ability to, you know, either go through a, you know, open and competitive hiring process, or maybe that person is qualified and can be appointed through the traditional.
So we need to pick that period?
Yes.
So do we want to say three or six months?
Yeah, I would say like three, three months.
You go with three months? I say we go with three months, so that, that happens if someone is elected?
Well, someone will be elected.
Yep.
On April.
Three people running, I think.
Two, about papers.
Two, two papers.
So.
So someone's going to be elected with a term of office of three years. However, if either this or the citizens' petition goes through, that may be shortened.
Correct.
If it's the special act, then when the special act is approved, then that elected official, using section two, will continue on for a certain period of time, perhaps three months, appointed by the Select Board. After that three months, we would have the ability to, as Steve just said, go through a whole rehiring process or just permanently appoint.
So I'm assuming it's during that three-month period. Once the special act is approved, we know we're going appointed.
Yes.
And whoever's in that office that happened to be elected stays there for three months.
Yes.
While we are hiring someone, whether we open it up or not.
They become appointed, the Select Board, because a special act makes them essentially appointed.
Appointed, and they can stay there for.
To three.
Three months?
Yeah.
Because then after three months, if we, if there's no one else that we wanted to appoint, then we would just appoint the person permanently or whatever for the next year.
But I guess the longer, right, so if, if the, you know, if the will of the residents is to move forward with moving from an elected position to an appointed position, the longer that overlap period is, the more you delay the ability to.
Maybe I'm not understanding this, but we have to go find somebody that we want to appoint.
Yes.
Yes, to hire.
I'm just saying, why, why limit it to three months? Why not make it four, make it five? What if, what if we have a problem finding somebody?
Well, that's, yeah, no, that, that's a good point, but it also doesn't mean that at three months, the person, like, the person may want to stay indefinitely, I guess.
But that'll be the Select Board at that time, you know, will have an appointed, the elected official turns into an appointed official when the act is approved. That newly appointed official will continue on for some period of time, and that will be in order to cover our search.
Right.
And/or give overlap to a new person coming in to get a little bit of training.
You're thinking more than, yeah.
I think it's not.
Go with six, let's just go with six.
It's only three. Do you actually have a handover, handoff process?
That's fair.
So.
So let's make it, let's make it six.
Well, we can think about it, even when we open it, when we open it and make the final wording recommendations.
I would recommend like five or six.
So, while we're on the same subject, so yes, there are two people that took out papers, and everyone that takes out papers has a certain date when they can withdraw their name.
Right.
That date is March 6th.
Yeah.
So if it's the will of the people, there's obviously a citizens' petition, there's a group of people that want the position to go appointed. If the will of the people is actually to make it appointed, and no one actually wins, like, no one runs, or they withdraw their name, and this special act gets approved at, yeah, approved at town meeting and sends off, what do we, we can appoint someone soon.
So in the interim, then, we'll be reverting back to our situation right now that will appoint a temporary town clerk.
So not our situation, but we would have the ability to appoint a town clerk.
Yeah, I guess I'm, you know, thinking about it a little bit more, knowing who's actually running.
So the, yeah, so if there is dropouts on the town clerk, so essentially, we would have to consider write-ins.
Yes.
So a write-in might win, but if there's nobody that wins the election, then that position is vacant, which essentially happened last fall, and we revert to, as we have right now, the Select Board will appoint a temporary town clerk until the next election.
That's not what happened in the fall. We didn't have an election?
No.
Right, okay, right.
Yeah, so.
So it was just an open office.
It's an open office, and the Select Board will appoint a temporary town clerk.
A temporary town clerk, that could be someone that would stay.
Yep, yes.
Could be.
I'm fine with that.
All right.
So just, just throwing that out there, it's just the, if that's the will of people, and it kind of sounds like it is from you guys and the people that brought the citizens' petition, I'm just realizing the easiest way to do it would be that, if no one ran.
And this all depends, you know, the several iterations, we're going to get the legislature to do their thing, or whatever as well.
Or then, in the citizens' petition, if it goes as it is, which is the next article, if they don't like, town meeting doesn't approve the special legislation, we go to the citizens' petition, that will, no matter what, take a three-year period.
Yes.
Because whoever does get elected.
Serves out.
Serves that three-year term, no matter what. So there's just different ways to do it, I guess it just kind of depends on what people want to do.
So we'll need to. On those two, I think we need to have very clear, perhaps a little bit extensive commentary as to what the possible iterations are, or what the interstate is getting.
Yeah, I don't know how you do that either, yeah.
Well, that's what we have a time to minister.
No pressure.
All right.
Infinite, infinite.
Anything else on the town clerk, are we?
So that's those last two articles, yeah.
So do we want the, are we pretty well set on five months or six?
Five works.
That's an odd number.
Well, expect that, so that can be included in the wording for our final vote next time. And the last article is election of officers, we got that covered. And anything else, Steve, as far as the warrant?
Can I go here? So the election of officers, excuse me, I did read them, they look correct. But right after the election of officers, those ballot questions go there before any of this.
Okay.
Officers return, yeah, so then there's three questions. And I did, I spoke to our interim assistant clerk, who had spoken to Hamilton's clerk, and they had requested that we do the debt exclusion for the fields as number one. Question number one, I thought we should do three to five as number one, but because in Hamilton, they only have one question, and that's number one, so that people can look at question one in Hamilton and question one in Wenham, and it would be the same.
Okay.
Just something to think about.
Good coordination, yes.
Yeah, I thought question one should be three to five, because that's been hanging over for the year, but I guess we should do something.
Let's keep the numbering the same between towns.
It's better for the two towns, yeah, so I would do that. And that makes sense, actually, because question three, the three to five, after the question, we have to have the whole act there also.
Yes.
It's a long ballot.
Yeah.
It's definitely going to be a long ballot.
So you think I put that one, put it last?
Yeah.
Number three.
Yeah.
And then at the end of that, then you have the officers' return, which is very well done right here. If my name's spelled right, thank you.
All right. All right, so I think we've pretty much done G, H, I, J, and K. And K, as we said, the debt exclusions are changing or will be determined on Thursday. And the last, next to last item, L, Michelle, if you can put that up. So Steve, you want to explain this one a little bit?
Yep, so this is, every year, the Essex Regional Retirement System votes to adopt a COLA. So the COLA is the increase for the amount in excess of below, I mean, up to the first $16,000. So they're looking for support from the Select Board for 2%. Currently, we have 30 Wenham, or Wenham employees are currently enrolled in the Essex Regional Retirement System.
So the retirement board has already voted 5%, which is the normal three, with a bonus two?
Yep.
But the bonus requires each of the towns, but 19 of them.
19.
To take our own separate confirmation votes, and they need to get two-thirds of those to actually bump up the extra 2%.
13.
Yeah, 13, yes, and then the dollar figure here is basically an extra 2% on just the first $16,000. So we're just talking $320 for each of our 30 retirees.
I know, I'm sorry, is this on retirees?
Yes, on retirees.
When you get your money?
Already retired folks.
Already retired folks, okay.
So they adjust, they adjust just the first $16,000, so if you have a $20,000 a year pension, the adjustment is only reflected on the first $16,000. So the $4,000 additional will stay static forever. You know, and that, it works the way all the way up to.
Do they do this all the time? I don't recall something like.
Yeah, they, well, they vote, so what this is different is the bonus that Gary was mentioning.
So the bonus forced it out to the towns.
I see.
Whereas regularly, it's just on the board.
Okay.
So the motion?
I move that the Wenham Select Board vote to accept the 2% bonus COLA increase of the Essex Regional Retirement Systems for FY '23.
I second.
This is FY '23.
Yes, because it's retroactive.
Oh, it's retroactive, okay, so I thought we were talking next, yeah, okay, sorry.
I have a second, anything further? Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Item M, so this was, we had put this on, and we had talked to Roger earlier, but now that last week Roger came to us and wants to put the commentary in, to the written commentary, so I think this is pretty much covered, because I think Roger's going to cover the special. cover the special margins, the four-fifths vote, the two-thirds votes, and so forth. He's going to research and determine exactly what can be amended and not amended, as far as the citizens' petition, and I think, is there one other, Michelle?
Roger's up. Yeah.
Yep. Go ahead, Roger.
Thank you, good evening again, um, a- as I do with any meeting, anytime there is a, a special quantum of vote, I will go over that, uh, both at the outset of that article, and also right before we're coming to a vote, um, I, I wasn't, uh, planning to put anything about specific quantums of vote in the, the note from the moderator, other than to reflect the fact that our town bylaws allow the moderator to declare a vote when it's a two-thirds quantum, uh, I can make that declaration, uh, from the podium, without having to necessarily do a counted vote. With respect to the question about amendments, uh, again, important to remember the difference between articles and motions, so articles can't be amended once the warrant goes to print, that includes citizens' petitions, um, as for every article, there has to be at least one motion made, otherwise, if no motion is made, we take no action, uh, on the floor of town meeting, but once a motion is made, um, any motion can be amended, uh, so that would include a motion under a citizens' petition, so while the Select Board, and no one else for that matter, can, uh, edit or amend the language of a citizens' petition article, once the motion is made under a citizens' petition, uh, people can offer amendments from the floor, just as they would with any other article, uh, I, I, there's nothing in town meeting time that prohibits that, I checked with the, uh, the consensus group of the moderators' association today, not, not a formal opinion, but, uh, we have a, a email, listserv, and I sent out a question about that, and the consensus was unanimously that, um, motions made under citizens' petitions articles can be amended, because all the statute that's, uh, requires is that the Select Board put citizens' petitions on the warrant in the form that they're submitted, uh, assuming that the signatures are obtained, uh, doesn't prohibit anyone, whether it's, uh, a- any resident who is registered to vote and in attendance at town meeting, to make a motion to amend.
All right, thank you, Roger, for doing that research for us, and, uh, anybody else in the Select Board have questions on that?
Nope.
All right, then, uh, the only other business we have is the future schedule.
Schedule.
So we have, uh, if I can borrow that for a second?
Yep.
We have a Select Board meeting on the twenty-eighth, which will be, uh, basically finalizing the budget and the articles, and some administrative things.
Six P.M.?
Six. Six-thirty?
Six-thirty.
All right, uh, the regular Select Board meetings in March, the first and third Tuesdays, the seventh and the twenty-first, we have the warrant hearing on Monday night before town meeting.
What time is that?
It's a FinCom one, right, usually it's seven.
Yeah, seven, I think is the usual one for the warrant hearing.
Okay.
All right, and then town meeting on the first, so that's the, uh, the formal things.
And we usually meet before the meeting, so we want to make sure we're there early.
One o'clock, uh, town meeting, the Select Board and FinCom will probably meet at noon.
Noon hour, yeah.
Very well, we also have, if you've seen the, um, on the schedule, the invitation to the Fireman's. Fireman's graduation.
Yeah.
So.
That's in Linfield, yep.
So, uh, want to, we respond to Steve as to who might attend that one?
That responded.
I think I already responded to him, said I'd be there.
All right.
Oh, yeah.
So, so we got representation. Any other, uh, meetings, uh, we need to attend?
No, I, I, there's some, there's some fascinating webinars that, that are out there.
Oh, there was one today.
Margaret has pulled together a whole crowd of people to deal with the MBTA issue, along with our, our law firm, who was actually working on that for us, and that's, uh, Thursday. Are you in that?
I am.
Yep.
Do you have the time for that?
I believe it's ten A.M.
Ten A.M., all right.
Yep, ten.
All right.
All right, so, um, without anything further to discuss, um, my move that we adjourn the February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three Select Board meeting, um, at eight twenty-five.
A second.
Anything further? Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Meeting adjourned, all right?